All right, we're good to go.
All right, great. So being 6:30 on July 6, 2022, and have inquired all of the planning board meeting for this evening. Before I go into that, I'll read a quick. We're still operating under the town manager's order that no one personal attendance of the members of the public who we've committed in the planning board meeting. But every effort we made to ensure the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted within 48 hours on the town's website and our other social media pages. The following members of Bridgewater Planning Board participating remotely. Patrick Triscoll, the chair, Mr. Raymond De Gemmian, Mr. Mike McDonald, Vice Chair, and Mr. Stephen Geller. During the meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll calls. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be sitting remotely. Mr. Shane O'Brien, the town of Bridgewater planner. Mr. Zootanero, the DPW director, and Mr. Greg Tansey, the town engineer. I didn't forget anybody, did I? Shane?
Nope, sorry, I was nodding my head.
At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board makes the unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project representative makes the unmuted. And we do not have any public hearings that allow for public comment. So we don't have to go into that. But if somebody does have a question. You can use the raise my hand feature in the petition menu or ask your question in the chat, and the host, who's Shane O'Brien, will recognize you. Again, please state your name and address before asking any questions. If you're on the call, if you're on the phone, you can dial sign language to raise your hand. Okay, first up on the agenda this evening. So the first item is called order. Second item is board business. We have an approval not required plan for 609 Vincent Street. I believe this is Silva Engineering. Assembly from Sora present, or do we just want to look at the plan?
I can bring up the plan, I know Larry's here, but I can share.
Turn it over to Mr. Sullivan. Evening. First, you want me to start at this point?
Start, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, this is a, this is a formal plan for the South Street Realty Trust. It's the property that extends all the way from basically Bethford Street all the way to South Street. And used to be part of it was part of Leech's Row. It's the basically Leach family property. And the four A is basically divided into two parcels, one lot that's on on South Street, and one lot that fronts off Bethford Street. And there's a dividing line in the middle. A little bit towards South Street, so.
I didn't hear what you said the last sentence, Mr. Sullivan, so could you repeat that? You're breaking up.
Oh, my audio's breaking up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't hear much when you said you were just for the record.
When you move, when you move closer to the computer, that seems to be better, but.
Okay.
That's better. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. No, so it's a, it's a formal plan of the Leach family property, which is South Street Realty Trust, the ownership. And it's all the property that extends from Bethford Street out to South Street. And what's being proposed is divided into two lots. One lot which has frontage on South Street, and the other one that has frontage on Bethford Street. They they far exceed the requirements for lot area and frontage.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, do you have any comments on the plan?
No, look, they meet the requirements of an A and R, and looks good to me.
Mr. Tansey and our Mr. Tanero, any comments?
No, I don't have any issues with it.
Board questions, concerns, comments? If not, do we have a motion to endorse?
Make the motion to endorse.
I'll second that.
Do we have a discussion?
Roll call. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. De Gemmian?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Silva. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have an A and R plan for 45 Scotland Boulevard.
All right, I'll pull it up, and Timothy Boda from Conoco is here, and happy to have him speak.
Mr. Bodi, you're muted, sir.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes, sir.
All right. What we're doing is we're going to combine a gap parcel, what I've got labeled on the plan as a gap parcel approximately 22 feet wide, and it's going to be combined with the parcel for 45 Scotland Boulevard. It's just a parcel that never got conveyed, some sort of an error probably back in the 80s. So it's pretty pretty much that's it, lot 35 Scotland is not changing at all. The gap is going entirely into 45 Scotland.
Mr. O'Brien, this was never a condition of a prior plan that they offered us or anything like that, what was it?
No, no, no condition of a prior plan, this is just something that was caught up with, you know, they're looking a little more into the details of the property. So being that there's that small portion is just so that the owner of 45 can have the whole parcel rather than deal with issues of ownership and other surveying issues, so no issue here. We made sure as well to make sure to label that gap parcel as not available lot, so there wouldn't be any confusion.
Pat, where there's two solid lines, one of those lines is essentially being removed by this, correct?
That's correct.
Any staff comments on this?
That line probably should be dashed line to demo, and then a show like a little squiggly line that combines them, right? Because that solid line that they're showing between the two, number 45 and that no man's land parcel is still being shown as solid. So it almost looks like you're creating a parcel by itself, so I should, I would have known that that line should be a dashed line. So that you know that that line is going to be in existence.
Okay, I can make that change.
And we can, you'll make that before we endorse it, sir?
Um, well, that's something we can make as a condition of approval, I feel. That's why I don't ask for my lawyers beforehand. But I feel that the board can endorse this with those conditions placed. If the board, of course, chooses wants to.
All right, how about, how about board questions or comments? Mr. Tanero, were you trying to say something? I cut you off, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I just wanted to understand what Shane was saying, that's all. In other words, vote to endorse, and then they have the corrected plan brought in for the endorsement.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so do we, if there's no further discussion, can I get a motion to endorse? Make a motion to endorse by Mr. Geller? Wait a second. And Mr. De Gemmian? Any discussion?
I just, I guess we just have to include it, endorse with the conditions mentioned, right?
Well, we can't condition a format, correct, but we just asked that the Mylar be.
Yeah, well, that's what, like I said, that's why we, we can just take it as with those changes placed, we're not gonna, we won't condition it per se, but the expectation is that the board will sign the Mylar with the dotted lines on it.
Gotcha.
All set, Michael?
Yep, yep, all set.
All right, any other discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. De Gemmian?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have Green Place discussion. I know you had sent out some correspondence. Mr. O'Brien, so I'll turn this over to you and town staff.
Sure, so I talked to Attorney Rollins recently, oh, sorry, I gotta admit someone into the room. Attorney Rollins recently about Green Place. So just kind of in summarizing, the applicant has not applied for a building permit. And so the question of if the property hasn't been built on hasn't been answered because no permits been applied. So the boat, the board voted to release the lot, lot one in 2010, as provided to the board as part of this package. The lot release was never, was signed by the board members but never recorded at the registry, which is after review, one of our requirements is part of our subdivision rules and regs. So we, we'd still need, we would need some sort of road bond or surety as, as part of one of the multiple questions as part of this for DPW and engineering to assess the road and provide an estimate what that bond would be. And then the issue to them, Attorney Rollins has brought up is that the fact that the subdivision has expired in 2003. And since that quote unquote lot release occurred in 2010, no building permit's been filed, and then the, essentially, the the subdivision expired as well. So, you know, it's a question of the board can ask for, for engineering to provide a surety bond based on the form, but that's dependent on the validity of what the form E is kind of showing. You know, in regarding the enforcement issues of covenants for, you know, chapter 41, 81, U and W. So I'm pretty much, you know, that lot release at the time was voted on by, by the board, but it, the validity kind of corresponds to the receipt of that surety. And we haven't received it yet, so it questioned, we kind of questioned the validity of that lot release based on that.
How would we even entertain a bond when subdivision has expired, basically?
I don't think you, I don't think you can. I think it would, we would have to look into a situation of a reapplication for it. I would assume that, you know, there'd be different requirements and rules based on current subdivision rules and regs, and I'm assuming the board be considerate of the previous approvals in terms of a lot of action because, you know, there, there is a roadway there, and there are lots there, and we, we understand that nothing's really going to change based on those, the lot layout. But, you know, being that it's an expired subdivision, it's difficult to kind of you know, hand take on and have enforcement without it being current.
Could you, could you just explain why it's expired, just to clear clarification, since they have started building already?
Well, typically, most law decisions that we have for subdivisions is that the entirety of the subdivision be completed within two years unless the applicant requests an extension. So the applicant had requested extensions and extensions as part of this process as we provided. However, there comes a point where that subdivision does expire when it hasn't been completed. You know, typically, we would be kind of chasing people down and saying, hey, you know, or the thought is that we'd be chasing people down to say, hey, your subdivision is expiring, you know, let the board know, and for an extension, because, you know, there's different factors that do occur over time that were, you know, subdivisions, you know, you don't want to say the, the planning board doesn't want to get into a position where it's been two years and a day, and the board says, well, you know, we're not going to extend it. The board, I think, you know, in the past has extended this subdivision, you know, numerous times, and the assumption that the applicant wasn't able to get a building permit from 2010, from the, you know, previous lot release without the surety to not being able to complete it within the last 20 years is kind of difficult.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just maybe I'm showing my ignorance. I assume that a subdivision had to be started within a two-year time period, not necessarily completed. Am I totally wrong?
No, it has to be completed, because then at that point, then subdivisions can take forever. We kind of, we kind of put their foot, feet to the fire for a lot of cases for subdivisions.
Just out of curiosity, does that include a 40B also, or no?
Well, 40Bs are operating on the different.
Okay, all right.
Right.
Thank you.
And part of the reason, I've been, I was at one point myself on the receiving end, so I can relate to both sides of the argument. However, the reason that you put, and most boards, and I think Shane will attest to this, most boards do put that a limit on construction. Not, it's not the same thing as when a GBA gives you an approval, and you have to show that you have substantially started the project in order for the permit to still be valid. Otherwise, as Shane alluded to, if it was just a question of getting the project started, I can start today and then wait for 20 years.
Yeah.
I come back out to do the work. So the idea of the time limit is to make sure that the person is not deluded with the, with the project, that there is in fact a real fault, because somebody might start a project, leave a pile of dirt unattended to, causing erosion on somebody else's land, and then they were abandoned the project, you know? So, yeah.
So Mr. Tanero, Mr. O'Brien, the lot, I believe the last time we had this meeting, we basically had the same discussion. And really, the, the point of this call was to get Mr. Roll take on this. So Mr. Roll agrees that the neighborhood has expired, is that correct?
Shane, you're muted.
It's not muted, it's just, I had my microphone the wrong way. Yeah, I would say that Attorney Rollins, and I, I would say that based on our conversation, that's what he would assume. Because at that case, if the board, because we, we do deal with situations, and we have one later on, where the board has released a lot without receiving surety, and in that case, the applicant did apply for a building permit and received it. And in this case, I don't believe there was a building permit filed from our understanding, therefore, the applicant didn't somehow get through the system in terms of getting a property built.
The applicant never recorded that release.
Correct. It's not, it's not at the registry, the covenant is reported, however, the lot release was not. And based on our subdivision rules and regulations as well, there's nothing in 81U that states it, but in our subdivision rules and regs, we do have a statement where, which it requires, and I did send that over to the board, just a small portion of our subdivision rules and regs, mentioning that these lot releases ideally should be recorded before we kind of ask for permits, but things happen.
Mr. Sullivan.
All right. Couple of things. Number one, we didn't get, my understanding is we never got a written response from town attorney. Is that correct? You're relaying some, your interpretation of a phone conversation you had with him?
Well, the town attorney also stated that you guys should probably be in touch with your own attorney, as he's not advisable to giving legal advice for your situation. It's more so an interpretation of what the board should be looking at for action, not essentially going through channels to get legal advice on the situation, just more so what the approach of the board should be in this situation.
Okay, so all right, so let's, let's, can I just go back two steps? Okay, first step is, the board took action, okay, which meant that they accepted the as-built plan that was submitted. They took action and they released lot one. And they held the rest of the lots as surety, and they were going to set a bond. They never set a bond amount, so he could not put up a surety, because it was never a bond amount put up. Okay, so let's put that aside for a second. So that means that lot one was released, there are plenty of lots in this town that are old lots that have been hanging around from prior subdivisions way back when, and if they met the requirements of frontage and area, they were able to be built. So there is no reason why lot one should not be still available lot. Now, the second half is this whole thing about subdivisions expire. If, I'm not hearing any real definition that I'm really understanding about subdivisions. Because if we went with the two-year expiration, then there isn't a single subdivision in this town that's ever been built and completed, finalized, built, signed off in two years. Never happened. The two years was to get to the point of exactly where he wants. As-built, the binder cost, the infrastructure was put in place, sent it to the board, the board accepted the as-built, and then they were going to take the next step and say, okay, I'll let you build on it. Never happened. Never, the subdivision never expired. That's what we've really been looking for the Rollins to say, that, you know, here's what the town's interpretation is of that rule and regulation, because that's not an expiration, it doesn't expire. Because you can't tell me there was any subdivision that you've ever dealt with. And everything was completed on that within two years, and nobody has ever carried forward extensions of a subdivision past the point where they submitted an as-built plan, a preliminary as-built, and they reached a point where they were going to have a bond put in place for release of the lots. That's just, that's just the truth of the matter, that's, that's really at the crux of it. Now, what I would say to you is that that, this is a gray area that needed to be cleaned up in, in the, in the rules, and it hasn't been cleaned up for all these years. But everybody's got sort of an opinion as to what they think it means. But what I'm telling you is, if you really look at it and you're fair about what you're saying, you can say that you don't like the way that the, the road is right now, and you can say that it's going to have to do a lot more work in order to be able to bring it up to, to actually be able to build on those other lots. But I really do say, truthfully, lot one is opposite where Ben and Nady's house is, Ben and Nady's road is there, that's his, that was the access to that, to that house. The eons, and Green Place was a road, is a road since 1851. This section that we're talking about has been there forever. This is not a new road that was constructed, it was a new road that was extended. So my opinion still is that lot one is a done deal, lot one was released and should be able to be built on. And the rest of it, the rest of it should be, should be revisited, but it's not expired.
So why is it before, why is it before the planning board?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, uh, well, I, I, I appreciate Mr. Silva's sentiments and passion. But the fact is, we've had subdivisions in town, and we don't want to be conflating, we don't want to be conflating the requirements for a four A lot with the requirements for a subdivision, lots that created as a part of a definitive subdivision approval. I recall, and most of the board members will recall, that Old Field Estates, for example, had to come back for the, for the reauthorization of their two-year special permit, as well as a definitive subdivision. Because it expired, and they recognized that it expired, and then they came back to the board, and then the board waived the fees, because it was still within that window, even though it had expired. There was standing within circumstances for the work that they were doing. So they recognized it, acknowledged it, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, before Longhome Builders bought that project, Silva Engineering was the engineer of record, and they prepared the documents and filed the documents for reapproval of that subdivision. So there has been a good history. You've got Sprakes, Sprink Place, I believe, it's called now Pinnacle Point, right on Broad Street. While before it was getting expired, they came recognizing that there was a two-year window. And I also believe that project was designed, properly designed by Silva Engineering Associates and approved by this, by this board, and the board gave extension. The fact is, the instant application, that is Green Place. The applicant, along the way, obviously believed and recognized that they needed to keep reauthorizing their project. That's why they came every two years to get it extended, so they were very cognizant of that fact, and they went with it. The fact that they decided to stop asking for an extension doesn't therefore translate to the board should ignore the requirements. Number two, or number three, depending on how many, how you count my points. The other issue is you can't have, think about it carefully. On one hand, you have been asked anywhere, our Green Place existed, and it's an ancient road, and you should treat it as a Form A. The board, let's get this very clear, the board did not endorse that plan as a Form A, period. The board endorsed that project as a definitive subdivision. The fact that they came for a lot release of that lot one tells you that it wasn't a Form A, it was part of the definitive subdivision. You couldn't be doing a lot release for a Form A, because a Form A will stand by itself. So the fact that there was a consideration for a release of that lot, okay, says that it's part of the definitive subdivision, and not a, and not a Form A lot. So, so the board cannot be changing the circumstance of that particular lot. It is part of the subdivision, and therefore, whether it's across from Ben and Eddie's house or not, it's part of a definitive subdivision, and therefore must not be treated as a Form A lot. Okay, because there are a lot of subdivisions that are in town, then people can be making that argument before this board, and says, well, I don't, I don't want you to hold on to my lawn, it's a Form A, because I've already built a portion of my road, so consider it a Form A. So you gotta be careful and consistent. The, the, so much time has transpired, and the utilities, for example, there's no evidence of the water line that was installed, ever tested, no evidence of it. Now, there's been claims of our inspections, but there's no specific written report to the planning board, on behalf of the planning board, attesting to the adequacy or satisfactory completion of the work that had been done. Yes, there was a preliminary as-built that was filed. Well, I will submit to you that the preliminary subdivision as-built plan probably was satisfactory at the time. Well, then preliminary subdivision plan, generally, what we, what we will normally do is you get a preliminary as-built, it gets reviewed by the town engineer, and then a report is submitted to the planning board. And then the planning board establishes a bond amount. If you recall, some of the subdivisions like Crimson Height or Colonial Drive, okay, or Stone Hill Lane, what the board has done is usually have a bond amount established, and then they release lots, and then they give back one or two lots, just as additional security. In this particular subdivision, Green Place, as far as we are concerned. As far as we are concerned. Green Place does not exist as a subdivision. Because it was not substantially completed. It was not, whether. The planning board heard at the time or the applicant, that is truly, unfortunately. Immaterial at this juncture. It's immaterial. And because I make an error, let's say yesterday. And I recognize that error today, it doesn't mean that, okay, gee, I screwed up, therefore I must, I must perpetuate my screw-up. That's not how it works. So unfortunately, uh, the subdivision does not exist. And the additional, and I, and I, I will submit to you what Shane has relayed to you. Uh Shane is a very, very good student and a very astute individual. He will not relate to you things that are not conveyed to him by the town attorney. Shane is pretty good. I've been on the other, across, on, on the opposite end. Of his, of, of him, and believe me, he keeps good record. And he write, you know, so I will submit to you that he, he is very succinctly. And thoroughly conveyed to you, represented to you, what he heard from the town attorney. And the town attorney's comments are in order. Okay, so the planning board, unfortunately. These are hard decisions that you, that is vested upon to make. And uh, you have to be, uh, you have to be careful how you make some of these decisions. Because any bad decision that you make. Can and will be used against you. On another project. And that is just a fact. It has happened before. So I will submit to you that. The applicant needs to reapply for his, for his project. Okay, and if they want to, because she doesn't, that subdivision does not exist anymore. If they want you to endorse that, uh, lot one as a Form A, then they should come with a Form A plan. And then we can review that Form A plan, whether it's consistent with the, um, with the, uh, uh, forty-one L. Uh, requirements and your subdivision rules and regulations. So at this point, I don't even think that you can set a bond. Because for you to set a bond presupposes that is subdivision road is still valid. That the preliminary work that's been done is adequate. And it's not. So I will, I will caution you to be very, very careful in, um. Doing any lot releases or even setting any bond. You can't set a bond on a subdivision that's expired.
Mr. Chairman. May I respond? I love you, Azur, but the two examples that you gave. Are totally different than the one that we're talking about. The two subdivisions that you talked about that we came back for and that we asked for. Reapproval. Both of those did not have any construction completed. That's the difference. This is what I'm saying. So when you talk about the two-year window. The two-year window is for you to get to the point where you do, you get to your binder cost. You get all your utilities in, you do your preliminary as-built, and you bring it before the board. Now, you talked about Pinnacle Point. Pinnacle Point was not at that point. And that's why it had to go back and get asked for extensions. You ask for Old Field, Old Field Phase Two had not been started. And that's why it had to go back, forward and get, get reapproved. Those are, that's apples and oranges. Okay, and I, and I don't want to, I really don't, okay? All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, we have been dealing with this issue for a long time. And there's no one that can tell me what that two-year completion date, what the definition of that is. What I can tell you is, there was correspondence from the planning board secretary to Mr. Bernstein. Prior to that, uh, meeting in which the, the board voted to accept the as-built. And, and, uh, and, and issued a covenant. Was that explained to him. That his time was running out and he needed to get, he needed to get that in, in order to be able to move to the next step. And that was like in January, uh, of two thousand and ten. You guys have a copy of that correspondence because we, we forwarded that. All I'm saying is, if you really look at subdivisions and getting to that preliminary as-built stage. That's what the two years was about. It was never about finishing a road. And, and I absolutely agree. If you haven't gotten to that point, you're going to expire. And, and in that case, you have to go back and reapply. I'm not saying that the other lots, that, that the remaining part of that road doesn't need to be brought up to. Some standards or assessed to make sure that it, it meets the requirements of Town of Bridgewater. But it, but to say that it was not inspected as it was done, there were reports, you got, he paid for Hickey, Mr. Hickey. To be there all the time that that work was being done. He was paid for by Mr. Bernstein, working for the Town of Bridgewater while all the work was done on that site. Now, I agree with you. There's a lot of years that have gone by for that road and there's a lot of. Lot of changes that have to be made in order to make it, make it, uh, acceptable now for the rest of it. But to say that it's expired, I just, I just don't agree with that at all. I really don't. That's my opinion.
You are, Larry, I, I missed it to you, Mr. Chairman, and I, and then, and I, uh. I will probably be making the, uh, the same arguments that Mr. Silver is making if I was sitting in these shoes, then I'm not. And, uh, he's, uh, uh, he's entitled to be wrong. Uh, um, and I'm sure that if he wants to be right, he would agree with my assessment. Uh, but the, uh, the point is, the point is that. Whether the project is, uh, the argument that is still valid or not valid. Not even about, uh, but it's incontrovertible that the project is not valid, valid anymore. That is incontrovertible. The fact also is, the conditions for releasing that lot as part of, as part of a definitive subdivision. The conditions do not exist. You cannot release a lot that is not in existence and a road that you cannot establish. Because for you to establish, okay, right now, for you to establish. A bond amount. Says that you are accepting. In whole or in part, what has been done. That is a very slippery slope to be on. Because you have one of projects in town that are ongoing, okay? And people are watching. And so I will, I will encourage you and exhort you. Uh, to not do any releases. Because you will be setting a very, very dangerous and precipitous precedent. Uh, uh, going forward.
Oh, what, what is that? Is this just an update or is this something actually before us?
This is just part of a discussion. There's no, this is just following up on the discussion that we had the, uh, a month ago. Um, just giving you an update of what Attorney Rollins stated. Um, and just giving the border update based on that, uh, previous discussion.
So it's the town's opinion that the neighbor, that it, that something is expired and the release for lot one is not valid, is that correct?
That is correct. And, you know, i- it's really, Attorney Rollins has stated, if, if the applicant. You know, gets their own attorney who interprets it differently. But, uh, you know, from our, it's difficult to state that the property isn't buildable when the building permit hasn't ever been. Applied for. If the, if the lot one release has been, is currently valid, as, as stated, there should be. Then a building permit would just be given.
Shane, do you have the, you have the lot released or was it actually, uh, given to you?
Uh, from my understanding, it was sent over to the applicant and sent over to the building inspector at the time. But I, I don't, I, reaching out to inspectional services, I don't believe there's ever been a building permit applied for.
And, and the only other thing I'd ask if you could clarify was, you indicated that there was something in the rules and regulations that said. That it, that the lot release had to be recorded or that it was suggested.
I can, I'm going based on our current rules and regs. It may have been different in the early two thousands. Um, but based on the language that I have is part of our current subdivision rules and regs. Um. Where is it? Lot releases shall be requested writing, surety. Nice, apologize, I gotta search it, record it.
It shall be recorded by the applicant, correct. Tomorrow releases shall be requested writing by the applicant and shall be acted upon at a regular scheduled meeting by the board. Upon acting favorably upon the request, majority of the board shall endorse this. Certificate of Accompaniment Release Form A, which shall be recorded by the applicant. In the case of denial, the planning board shall notify the applicant in writing as to the reasons for its receipt.
Gotcha, okay, yep.
Shane, do you, do you believe that all lots that have been released and all subdivisions that are in town right now have, they have recorded at the registry?
I've not looked at every single lot yet in my, my small, small tenure here. Um, but I, I, I've seen a lot of subdivisions where it's been problematic in terms of, um. How we've used to do things. Um, and I'm just trying to do it, uh, the way that our rules and regulations require. And I can only be held by, uh, mass general law.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just wondering if you had seen that, that, this lot releases. Of individual lots have been, in fact, been recorded on subdivisions that are.
Honestly, I, I, I go, when I, when any, anytime someone comes in in terms of asking for information, I immediately go to the registry. And that's where I, that's where I start before our own records.
See, that's why, that's why I made that statement, but you have just, uh, uh, Larry, uh, announced, treated my point about Shane. That he's very thorough and, uh, his response to you just, uh, uh, affirms that. So that's a good thing.
I don't think I've ever said anything bad about Shane in my life.
Oh, no, 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 that's what I'm saying.
It's too early in the game, guys.
So it's, it's, it's good. It's good. I'm saying that you affirming what I said. So it's good. It's a good thing. That's where we.
You say anything bad about me, I'll be in the minutes.
Well.
It'll be small, it'll be in the seconds.
But actually, the decision letter is even stricter than, uh, rules and regs because it says it shall be complete within two years.
To find that, that's all we're asking. What does that mean?
Well, it says complete. It says all roadways, utilities, et cetera, shall be written in the decision letter. Uh, our, our rules and regs say substantial completion, but the decision letter for that project says complete.
Yeah, and the decision letter is what you go by.
So what I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking this board. What does the definition of that mean?
Of complete? Ready, I'd say, I'd say ready to be accepted.
You, that would be finalized, wouldn't it be? The rest are in, everything's in, sidewalks are in, everything.
Complete and finalized.
A complete.
That's what I'm saying. This definition is not there.
So, let's, let's back up, let's all back, let's all back up here, if you will. I think, uh, I think, uh, uh, Mr. Silver is. Fully trying to put this board on the defensive.
No, I'm just trying to get a straight answer.
No, 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 no.
Can I ask a question, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh? What are we, what's before us in terms of?
Exactly, just, just a discussion.
I, I'm not sure where we're going with this. I don't see where we're going. I mean.
Oh, we, we asked, we asked, we asked Mr. Rollins the way in, and I believe. And I don't want to speak for Shane, for Mr. Rollins, but Attorney Rollins, I should say. But I believe that. Attorney Rollins didn't, not disagree with us. And he basically said if the applicant disagrees with the time, they can hire their own attorney. Is that really where we're at?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's. No, there's no need for a vote, um, at this time.
Alright.
Are we, we good to move on from this?
Yeah, we can, I can talk to me, Larry Azu, can talk offline in terms of, and like, we can keep the board, uh, in the loop on this.
Alright, next item we have the South Farm Estates discussion of twenty-seven, item twenty-seven. Mr. O'Brien.
Yep, I believe we have Manny Bajenga here.
I'm here. You guys hear me?
We can see you and hear you.
Hey, perfect. So, uh, I guess I'm here before the board is, um, when we did self-playing, we're all complete, the board released, um. The lot, we put up our bond. But I guess one of the, um. Conditions was that we had to register with the. Um, the conservation and deed it all over. Shane, can you help me out with that?
Yeah, so don, it's part of the decision, I think it's condition twenty-seven. Um, of the South Farm Estates decision is that the land before the first certificate of occupancy. Um, let me just pull it on for me, sorry. I want to make sure it's the correct condition. I think it was on the agenda. Yeah, twenty-seven is a parcel C and parcel A shall remain as conservation land. Conservation restrictions shall be replaced on parcel C and A in perpetuity. The restriction shall be for conservation, passive recreation. Um. With two options where the land should be conveyed to a homeowner association tied to the deed at each lot. Run with a chain of title or conferred to a nonprofit agency dedicated to the preservation of open space. And then proof of restriction to be recorded shall be provided to, uh, Community and Economic Development Department prior to the first, uh, certificate of occupancy.
So I guess what I'm here for is that we started the process. Um, I actually got Shane some paperwork with Wildlife Trust. The house is complete. Um, everything else is signed off, but obviously we cannot move forward. So we're just asking the board if. If they can hold any further occupancy on the other two lots that we have, because one was already existent. Um, so that I could move into my new house. Um. But again, this is nobody's fault but our own, my, my own. So I'm just asking, I guess, if we could. Put a hold on any further occupancy permits on the property, no exceptions, so that I could get in, but, um. I gave a letter to Shane and it's, it's actually going to be, you know, a while before. Uh, they have interest, they want the parcel, but it's going to be a while before they get it in front of their board and make it all happen. So that's what we're here to ask for.
Mr. O'Brien, do you have an opinion on this?
Um, ideally, Mr. Bajenga could have, uh, provided, uh, in work with Wildlands Trust earlier, um, as well as, um. However, in, in terms of, uh. The, the letter that was provided from Wildlands Trust that they do, um. And I, I did forward that over to the board, the, the letter of, specifically the, uh, non-binding letter of interest. Um, it, it seems like it's going to be a fair amount of time before they. Make a determination if they're going to take it. They, they did say probably at the end of summer. Um, whereas this is pretty much the. Last hurdle, um, from our standpoint in terms of holding up a CO. Um, and, and just looking at it, I, I don't have an issue of being pushing it to the, the second property for certificate of occupancy. Um, I, I would understand if the board held firm in terms of their initial decision. However, I, I think just based on the letter that Wildlands Trust, and I, I do believe that they would accept the property in the course of the upcoming months, but. Uh, just based on their timeline that they provided as part of their letter, it just seems like it's going to be, uh, a fair amount of time. Um, and I, I don't have an issue with the, the request on pushing it to another, uh, house's occupancy.
Mr. Bajenga, what lot are you building the house on now?
Uh, South Farm, um. It is six south, I don't remember. I want to say, can you do a lot this is?
I can pull it up.
It would be lot. Um, it would be lot, if you're going down the road to the left, so it would be lot three, one.
Uh, I think, yep, this one right here.
Lot three. Right there, that one there, yep. So the other two is we would hold with, you know, um, no occupancy until we get this done.
So my only, my only question was, are you going to occupy lot three or somebody else?
I am. The board released the lot to me. We built, we put up the bond.
No, but, but who's going to, who's going to occupy lot three?
That would be me.
So I guess I'm fine with, I mean, and I'll open up to that question to the board, but just my, my question is, what happens if you sell your house?
I hope I don't sell, I just built it.
Because, because of. Because, because if we need to put HOA on it, it needs to be done before the first, you know, it, it, what happens if Wildlands Trust doesn't take it? And then you need to go put an HOA on it. Are we sure that you? You know, if you want it, there's no problem, but, but, um, if there's a, if there's a transfer of title on lot three, then it could become problematic, right? Is there an HOA recorded for the, for the three lots already? You already provided that, correct?
There is.
There's already an HOA recorded?
Correct.
Then you provide, all right, you provided that to us before we released lots. Okay, I almost said that, I'm sorry. Any other board questions? What thoughts?
I'm okay with it.
Mr. McDonald, any other board thoughts?
Okay.
Mr. Gallow, Mr. Jimmy?
Yeah, I, I think we're good.
Okay, so we're going to, how, so do we need a modification because of, of, uh?
It would be, it would be a minor modification of the subdivision, um, based on condition twenty seven. I wouldn't open up the whole thing, just. Specific to condition twenty seven that we would modify it for the certificate occupancy of.
Did he submit the application for minor modification?
No, but in terms of the decision, um. I think the board can take up certain actions without necessarily a public hearing. Um, to allow for certain changes to occur, certain modifications.
Right, and that's, so minor modification, we don't do a public hearing, but we still have an application and a fee?
Um.
So I guess how do we act on it if we don't have a minor modification before us?
Let me look at the decision quickly.
Because we're modifying the approval. I mean, I'm okay with doing it, but he should probably file for an, an application and a fee.
Sure, let me just, let me just.
As part of, we won't sign off on it until that application.
Sure. No, because I, I've dealt with certain subdivisions and prop. Projects where, as long as it's noticed, it would be considered, but like I said, I'm trying to familiarize myself with the, our guys' process.
Yeah, it's, it should be, if, I think in order for us to act on it, it needs to be a minor modification.
Uh.
I, I'm fine with paying the fee and paying the, the application, um, Shane. Go there.
Yeah, I think I'm basing mine on condition five. As part of the decision, but if. If that, the board feels comfortable doing so, um. I'm happy to abide by, uh. Board's process.
Yes, so a minor modification wouldn't require a, um. Public hearing. It would be a public meeting, which is, is.
Sure.
So are you okay with an, an application, you know, dated after our discussion with the fee, just, uh? Because we're not meeting for a month, at least.
Are you talking to me or Manny?
To you, before we sign off on.
I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable based on, um, this discussion, um. But I, just knowing process now, I'm, I'm happy to do it a different way next time.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, is I think it's fine, but we should probably have them just for, for.
Reference, sure.
You know, we can have this discussion, we can vote on it contingent upon a receipt of an application. And, and the, the, I think it's a hundred dollar fee versus a three hundred dollar fee, and it's a three hundred dollar fee, or even things, whatever it is, three hundred dollar fee.
Uh. I think so, probably. We got half our stuff like in paper form, we got half our stuff on permidize. Uh, on electronically, so I'm still trying to absorb.
Is the board okay making that a condition, or do we want to get the application and the fee before we act on it? It would delay it a month.
I'm fine doing it, uh, like that, you know, get them in there. Like there's anything that's going to backfire on us.
I'm okay too, but I think it does show that, uh. You got to make sure you don't skip things in the process of, uh, any things approved. It could, it could come back to bite you at some point.
Will do.
So Shane, I just, tomorrow, just ship up, get the application, pay the fee. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yep, I'll see you tomorrow.
Well, so Mr. Gallow, are you okay?
I am. I said, no, I'm fine with it.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Bajenga, you're okay with completing the application and, um. Submitting a fee with the.
Yep, no worries.
So we, we have a minor modification before us. Basically to, um. Change item twenty seven of the decision letter. Um. It, what basically we should say is prior to the second certificate of occupancy, correct? So we're changing, we're changing the requirement of twenty seven from the first house to the second house, correct?
Yeah, but it would actually be the third occupancy, because there's already one previous house that was existent, so it's only three houses.
We only approved this, we approved three lots of the. You have a three lot subdivision then?
Four lot subdivision, one was already on there.
One's a retreat lot, right?
That was, it got put into a four lot subdivision, so the, the road would be a lower standard from what I understand, if Shane pulls up the plan.
That's a three lot subdivision.
Okay, I maybe I'm wrong. I could be wrong. I thought it was a four lot subdivision, I forgot. So that lot at the very bottom would be lot four.
No, we lost one too.
What's that one right there? That's one, two, three, and four, so it's a four lot subdivision, and one was already in existence. Right? All the way to the left. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
Yeah, but when, when we approve this, we approve this as a three lot, because lot four was already existing, correct? Correct, and they don't get their, they get their frontage. So, so just think, just think about it, Manny, right? Right now, if this is the first, the next one's the second.
Okay. Oh my, and I, I'm just. I would just, I was under the assumption it was always a four lot subdivision, so that's fine. And the, the retreat lot became lot four, which was at the frontage off of South Farm. Because they have the frontage, it would have been a retreat lot off of South Street. That's how I interpret it, but whether it's three or four. Because it, it shows on there, it's an existing building, and then it goes into lot four, but he was, he was already there.
Lot four is a retreat lot, three point five nine acres.
That's how it started its life, but now its frontage is off of. South Farm. I'm pretty confident, I'm not, yeah, it has to be off South, off South Farm, because that's where his entrance to his driveway is. So it is a four lot subdivision. If you look at his driveway, it's off South Farm. It's no longer off of South Street. Correct?
I believe, yeah, I believe lot four is a retreat lot.
Okay.
But, uh, our commission said the first certificate of occupancy. Right?
That's correct.
So we're just changing it to the second certificate of occupancy.
That is correct. No changes to the plans, just changes to, specific to the condition that was mentioned on the agenda.
Well, we can even say if we want to clear it up, prior to a certificate of occupancy, lot two, lot one, and lot two, you know, you can say it that way as well.
Yeah, because that receipt of that form as well isn't received necessarily by the board, it's by our department. Um, so it would be essentially our department making the determination, um, if it's been recorded.
So, so just to make this a little bit easier, Shane, right? Why don't we, why don't we have a motion to accept? The minor modification to allow for the, the, to get to the sign off on lot three. By not meeting condition twenty seven, but any further, any further occupancy permits require a lot twenty seven will be satisfied.
Sounds, uh, good to me.
Something like that, so. Any further discussion on this? Do we have a motion? On the minor modification? Okay, to allow for the, um. Condition twenty seven to be met, met at the next CO.
I'll make that motion that's, they say by the chair. The minor modification.
All right, second for discuss, this is going to be a second for discussion.
I'll second.
Mr. Gallow?
Yep.
This for discussion purposes, before anything signed off by the town or by the planning board. An application will be filed, a fee will be paid, is that correct?
That is correct. Being that we're the ones giving certificate of occupancy, we can make sure that an application, everything's been filed. Just for record purposes.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion and a second. So Mr. McDonald? Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm yes. All right, um, next item on the agenda.
All right, uh, we got Firefly Lane.
Mr. O'Brien, are you going to take this on?
Sure, I'll. Take it nice and quick. Just make sure I got that in front of me. Um, so yeah, um, so I sent over an email to the board. I've been communicating with Greg Maroni regarding Firefly Lane. Um, we currently don't have a road bond, however, lot one has been released, uh, according to the July twentieth meetings. Recorded and, uh, received a building permit for on. Um, it looks like the board voted actually earlier that year, January twenty twenty, to, uh, release one lots one, two, and four from Covenant. Depending on the receipt of a road bond. Um, we currently have not received a road bond. Um, we did have an amount that the board agreed to. In twenty twenty, um, for sixty four thousand, seven hundred and thirty nine. Um, but, uh, another option that we had, we also sent it over to engineering. Um, to look out for an, if a new road bond, uh, amount, due to just the amount of time that has passed and see if the board. Uh, would vote for a new amount that could be agreeable based on, uh, for some lot releases. Um, there are some. Remaining issues that, uh, Mr. Tanzy has pointed out, I forwarded along that to the board in terms of items that need to be completed. Uh, however, I did also forward out the, uh, bond calculation to the board, uh, with the new numbers that I can, uh. Which would require, uh, a completion of a total surety for the new numbers as ninety nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and five, fifty cents.
And you did provide us with all the recording information from Mr. Maroney, correct?
Um, we do have the covenant and lot one was recorded, um, and they did get a building permit for it.
We signed it, we signed a lot, a lot released, but they had lots and it wasn't reported?
No, the lot one was the only one that was recorded. Um, so initially it was lot one, I believe lot one and three and four were released. Uh, pending a road bond, a surety. Um, but then in July of twenty twenty. Um, only lot one was voted to be released, just, I'm going based on minutes, uh. And then from there, that, that lot was released, and then we didn't receive a, a road bond. Um, but however, they did receive a building permit and that property was built on. And of course, it was, in additionally, it was recorded.
Okay, it's still an active subdivision, correct?
Uh, from my understanding, yes.
Okay. Um, so what's before us tonight? The lot release, the, the, the bond that we, we got the bond this afternoon, right?
Correct, if the board would like to, um, I know there were three of the member, three, I believe. Three of the, three, four board members that are currently here, um, attended that twenty twenty meeting, um, with those, uh. That initial number. However, I did reach out to Greg to see what that number would be in twenty twenty two standards, and it has gone up. Um, so I just wanted to send out to the board, they were agreeable to that first amount, or because we haven't received that bond. If we're more comfortable with current twenty twenty two, um, surety amounts.
And I see the amount is ninety seven thousand, I was incorrect.
The, it's a ninety, about ninety nine thousand, a little over.
It's quite the difference.
It is. Um, but it.
Well, all we're doing right now is going to set the block, correct?
Um. Correct. Uh, but Greg, Greg Maroni, I believe, is here if he would like to.
Well, we said, how long ago did we sign the lot release? Is that, is there anybody who can record that?
Well, we haven't, for the other lots, we haven't, we didn't write up or sign any other lot releases. Lot one has been signed by the board, voted on and recorded, and that's why there is, and they also brought in for a building permit. The other ones have not.
Yep.
Well, we have received building, electronic building permits for, uh, properties on the upcoming lots, however. Due to the fact that there's no lot releases, we can't, I can't sign off on any building permits.
All right, so right now you want us to vote to set the lot, the bond and release the lots, correct?
Um, well, if, if we receive a check for that amount and the applicant is amenable to it, I would. Be okay with it, but, um. I would say that I'm comfortable with that.
Mr. Maroney, do you have anything to add?
Excuse me, what was that?
Do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, so, um. Could you pull up the bond, and it'll have came to a separating one, you pulled that bond calculation, Shane?
Yeah, I can do that.
So you want us to vote on a bond amount of ninety nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars cash bond, correct?
That would be correct. In terms of, yeah, that number for surety.
Do we have a motion, do we have a motion, uh, by the board?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
The motion by Mr. Jimmy and second by Mr. McDonald. And discussion? Shane, does this also indicate that, does this also mean we're releasing two, three, and four, or is that, do you want that as a separate vote?
Um. If the board feels comfortable making it one vote or two votes, um, um.
We'll do, we'll do this two votes, we'll do a motion in a second. So, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. All right, so now do we have a motion to release after the two thousand cash bond lots two, three, and four?
So moved.
Hi, Mr. McDonald, a second.
Second.
I just, I just want to, sorry, uh. Can I speak on the discussion? I'm sorry, I'm not a board member, but.
Bye, Mr. Gallow, second, bye, Mr. Gallow. Second for discussion. So, go, go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
I just want to make sure that the terms of the conditions are met, um, as well, as part of these lot releases and as part of the decision that we receive, um. The ASBIL plans, additional information that's required as part of the decision, because like I stated before, there is some. Outstanding issues in terms of what we need to receive. Um, I did, uh, have. Um, Mr. Maroni did send me over a copy of the, uh, preliminary as-built roadway. Um, but let me just pull that, I have my memo here. Under my, the recording receipt. Got to go blow that, sorry. I'm just killing time right now. Um. Yeah, I just want to make sure the conditions of the decision there, that are outstanding, um, be met as well.
Just to be consistent though, Mr. Maroney did apply for an extension and with tolling and everything, the subdivision is still current, correct?
Um, based on the information that I have, I can. Yeah, from all indications, it should be.
Okay. All right, so. What else? So, so in addition to the bonds, the ASBIL is not.
Yeah, so let me, but let me confirm with the, um. Let me confirm as well in terms of the, the. Dates on the subdivision as well, and as if it was subject to any. COVID standards as well.
So.
I'll use my internet. Not working. All right, fly. I'll have to recheck if the, the, make sure that the subdivision's active.
I think what I asked it was, it was an extension and then that whole period of, um.
COVID, because that we got, that, that occurred for, um, one of the first items that we had, um, not Old Field. Uh, what was the other subdivision? We were going back, it was actually with the Silver Engineering. I think we were going back and forth, I can't.
Yeah, well, I think a while ago Jennifer told us that South Farm, that, um, Firefly was expiring, but then with COVID it was told, so.
Yeah, I think that was, there was. I believe that was the one.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to release lots two, three, and four. After the ASBIL is completed and maybe. Ninety nine thousand, six, ten bond is posted, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
I'm yes, okay.
I just question the word to you, Mr. Timman. I assume that the bond money that we are talking is that cash bond, correct?
We said cash bond, yes, sir.
Yes. Um, so we'll, we'll take care of that on our end. Um, the only thing that I think we have left is the, um. The board wants to approve any minutes from May. Yep, May eighteenth.
No, I, I didn't look at it, did anybody else look at it? Do we want to move this to another meeting so people can look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move it to the next meeting, or I don't even know if that needs a motion or not, but.
Pass, let's take this. Take those next meeting, any, um, board committee reports, anything for us, Mr. O'Brien?
Um, I think we're down to three people, um, for the June, July twentieth meeting, I know at previous meeting, I'd say the July sixth meeting was canceled. Uh, but I think we're looking in a direction where the July twentieth meeting. Um, will most likely be canceled just due to lack of quorum. And there's probably not, nothing going to be on the agenda as well, so, but I've been rung before, so. Uh, I'll keep, I'll keep you guys posted.
All right.
And then, um, I sent over the, um, the ASBIL plans for, uh, Fruit Street. Um, and we also got confirmation, um, from engineering DPW that Madeira's Way. Um, looks good, so, um. I know it's the last meeting the board discussed endorsing just based on DPW and, um. Engineering's approval as per every decision, um, but, uh, DPW gave us the A okay, that Madeira's Way looks good. Um, so we're looking for that to be. Endorsed. So I, I, historically, I don't, I don't know if the board votes to. Endorse it, these meetings, or they just come in as satisfaction of the, uh, the decision. So.
Uh, I, I think, you know, once, once you guys. Amendment is complete and signed off, one of us can come in and sign off on it, so.
Okay, just making sure. Every board's different.
Um. All right, so that's it, do we have a motion to adjourn, is there's nothing else?
I'll make motions, Richard.
And Mr. Jimmy, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Bye, Mr. Gallow? Um. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, thanks.
Night, everyone. Night, good night, all.
Good night.